You please stand.
May we pray. Our dear, most gracious heavenly Father, we come before you tonight with joy in our hearts. We give thanks, O Lord, for the wondrous and glorious gift of prayer and for what it's meant in each and every one of our lives on a daily basis. Go with us this evening as we do the business of our city. Lead, guide, and direct us that the decisions we make here tonight will glorify your name in the name of your only begotten Son, our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, for it's in his name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first agenda item will be a presentation of our Community Pride Award, and I believe Joe Wright with the Beautification Board is here to present that.
The Halton City Beautification Board presents a Community Pride Award each quarter to a group, church, individual, that puts forth a little extra effort in supporting the city-sponsored functions. This quarter, our members are pleased to recognize Bill Louthen, owner and operator of Clownburger. Throughout the past several months, Bill and his wife Rosita, daughter, and Marissa have supported our board's activities as well as the parker bricks activities and also this Halton City's 50th Anniversary Committee. At our Community Tree, Christmas Tree Lighting, Bill was there to provide refreshments for those attending. During April, he cooked hot dogs for 2,000 people at the Spring Fest. He was also there to cook hot dogs in the rain for our bike, bike run for the 50th Committee. The local schools have benefited from Bill's generosity. He is always willing to work with the kids and educators, so we are very proud, the Beautification Board is very proud to present this to Bill, Rosita, and Marissa. If y'all would come forward, I believe Daisy would like to present this to you.
Everybody has to come forward. Let me read this into the record. "We have a proclamation, Community Pride Award presented to Bill Louthen and family. Whereas it is in the best interest of all that each of us take responsibility for caring for our local environment and the residents therein, and the Louthen family has publicly demonstrated its commitment to that cause by participating in and assisting with programs sponsored by Halton City, including the annual Community Tree Lighting, Spring Fest, and the 50th Anniversary Bike Run. And whereas the Halton City Beautification Board wishes to recognize those who voluntarily put time and effort into making Halton City a better place in which to live and work, now therefore I, Nancy Watkins, Mayor of Halton City, do hereby proclaim Bill Louthen and family winner of the Community Pride Award, second quarter in the year 2000." The next item of business will be our consent agenda. It consists of items number two through 10 plus number 14. We are removing number five and six for a separate vote. So if we could have a motion, gentlemen, for two through 10 plus 14 minus five and six. Councilmember Markham?
Put that in form of a motion, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Avery?
Just for a second.
I have a motion and a second. Please register your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Agenda item number five is the, is our ordinance to amend provisions relating to the appointment of boards and commission members. And I have a speaker's request card. Jack Lewis, will you please come forward and state your name and address for the record?
I'm Jack Lewis. I live at 4600 Savell, Halton City. And the reason I've asked for ordinance number zero dash 2000 dash 017 dash 01 being removed is states of consideration or action regarding amending the code of ordinance that the City of Halton City has amended to amend the provisions relating to the appointments of boards and commission members. And my question and the reason I'd like to be discussed publicly is that the, I'd like to know what this amendment is.
Do you want to explain that?
I'll be happy to attempt to do so. There are actually two changes that are being considered, Mr. Lewis. One is that the current ordinances that relate to appointments to boards and commissions provide that if a council member does not make an appointment within 45 days, then any other member of the council can make an appointment to that particular council member's place. This would do away with that so that each council member would appoint members to their own corresponding positions on the boards and commissions regardless of if it took more than 45 days. The other change in the proposed ordinances relating to appointments relates to the appointments to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Currently, the ordinance that sets up the procedures for appointments to the Planning and Zoning Commission provides that if there's a vacant position, the first alternate automatically moves up into that vacant position and then the mayor appoints an alternate to take the place of the first alternate. The change that's being discussed this evening would change that so that the corresponding council member would make an appointment regardless of who that person is. It wouldn't automatically be the first alternate moving up.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Then we would be ready for a motion, council, on agenda item number five. Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would move that we approve agenda item five as written.
Councilmember Avery?
That was for a motion, but I'll second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Please register your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Agenda item number six was asked to be removed by councilmember Hensrilling, and we also, Mr. Lewis wants to speak on this one also. Do you want to go ahead first, Mr. Hensrilling?
I'll defer to Mr. Lewis if he'd like to go ahead.
Okay, Mr. Lewis, you want to come forward, please?
I would defer to the council to discuss it. It may answer my question to your discussion.
Councilmember Hensrilling?
That's fine.
Back to you.
Okie doke. Thank you, Madam Mayor. The reason I asked to have this item pulled from the consent agenda is because I think it is an item that's most definitely worth mentioning because it will have an impact, potentially a pretty significant impact on Halton City. Anytime you have a charter amendment election, there's always changes, and sometimes those changes can be significant, sometimes they're just minor changes. And some of the items that will be a part of this charter amendment election are pretty minor and pretty much matter-of-fact detail-type stuff, but there are many items that are of substance that I think the citizens need to be made aware of. I don't think that we can do too good of a job educating and making the citizens aware of the issues that we vote on and discuss, and particularly the bigger ones that we put before the voters. As of latest Saturday, I had a citizen make the comment that we really didn't do too good of a job in January with the sales tax election and the information they got. You know, I think we've tried everything, every avenue we possibly can to get the word out, but this is just one other opportunity that we can specifically try to educate and inform the citizens about what we're doing and going to try to change in the charter. The charter is a very significant document for the city. It's by which, you know, the rules that we operate, and it's really a founding document for us. So what I would like to do, we had a council workshop a couple Saturdays ago, and I really wasn't aware that we were going to be making some vote, a vote on the recommendations from the Charter Review Commission in that meeting, but we didn't because we have a time deadline to meet, to actually get it posted so we can have the August 12 election. So what I wanted to try to do tonight is just have each of the items pointed out, maybe not word by word or verbatim from the ordinance, but just kind of an overview of the different items, and I'd like to, you know, just kind of start the education process about what changes are going to take place. So what I'd like to ask at this time is if we could have, you know, just a brief discussion or maybe from the city manager, just an outline of what the proposed changes are. If we could do that, that would be great.
There are nine different propositions which will be on the ballot, and I'll have to sketch over these.
Yeah, just briefly.
I wasn't worried I was going to have to get into these in any depth, but, and some of them are, as Mr. Hensrilling said, a little esoteric in nature, and some, I think, are a little bit more important in terms of detail. Proposition one relates to there being a formal city boundary map that would be the official boundary map of the city. We don't technically have that at this point. The current charter just relates to the boundaries of the city at the time the charter was initially developed and as amended, and this would provide for an updated map. Let's see. Proposition number two relates to appointments of boards and commissions, and it would specify, if approved, that the city council is authorized to appoint not only the members of the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Board of Adjustments, which are the only boards and commissions mentioned in the charter, but all other boards and commissions as the council may be necessary. Again, it's just a clarification. Item or proposition number three relates to terms of elected officials, and if approved, this amendment would remove the term limits which are placed on the mayor and council members now. Currently, there are, there are limits on the number of consecutive terms that anyone can serve as a mayor or council member or a combination of the two. The filing fee change is proposition number four. Currently, to be a candidate for city council, you must either have 50 signatures or provide a $10 filing fee. This would change so that the 50 signatures would still be required, but the filing fee would be adjusted to $50. Proposition number five relates to an ethics policy and would require, if approved, that the city council must adopt by ordinance an ethics policy which governs elected officials, board and commission members, and city employees. Proposition number six relates to nepotism and would allow that relatives of city officials to hold positions of service to the city where no compensation is provided. In other words, relatives of council members, for example, could serve on boards and commissions so long as there's no compensation paid for that position. Proposition number seven is a whole series of changes with regard to civil service, testing requirements, making it optional for non-sworn employees to be paid on a basis of longevity rather than, than merit, provides for eligibility lists to expire after six months rather than a year, as is the case today, authorizes firefighters to take sick leave for partial shifts, and that's something that isn't specifically allowed in the charter today, but this would clarify that, provides an accrual system for employee vacation leave, and provides that after probationary period, employees can take vacation as it accrues. Proposition number eight relates to amending the charter to conform to federal and state law requirements that have changed since the last time the charter was amended. And proposition number nine is a technical and clarifying corrections, which are basically non-substantive grammatical and contextual corrections and eliminating some obsolete, obsolete provisions. And those are the nine propositions.
Okay.
And I believe that with the exception of one, which concerns the terms of elected officials, these were all recommendations that were brought to the council from the Charter Review Committee. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd just like to note that there was a grammatical change made in proposition six as to the wording, where we changed a couple of words, but the content is still as was intended.
That's correct. Mr. Lewis, do you want to come forward and speak, please?
Yes.
I'm Jack Lewis, live at 4600 Savell, and part of my question was answered, but I still have parts that are not answered. Items three and six of this charter changes, one of which you just mentioned, was not approved by the Charter Revision Commission.
Three was not. I mentioned that.
Three. So three was not approved by the Charter Review Commission. In fact, the Charter Review Commission, which I was a member of, was rejected by the Charter Review Commission five times. It was passed by the voters in the last charter revision election by the voters of Halton City. And my question, if any of the council or the mayor would like to answer, is why are there so much interest in removing a revision that has just been added relating to the tenure of service of elected officials? And this ties in with the other change, which is item number six. And for those of you who would be looking at these in the coming elections, you can remember these two, three and double at six. Both of them should be rejected again by the voters because the nepotism clause, which has served this city ever since its beginning and has served private business, is the same as it was when Adam and Eve was here. Nepotism involves the hiring, the undue favors to relatives. This allows a council and the mayor to appoint relatives to boards and commissions that are, it's not a paid position. And what I don't understand is why anyone would want to serve unlimited terms on a $10 a month job or a non-paid positions. There are plenty of volunteer positions in churches and civic organizations, so I really don't understand why the Charter Review Commission, which started meeting in January, in my time, even though I'm retired, is important, but when your mayor appointed me to this commission, first one I've served on since serving as mayor and council member with some of you folks that are up there now. And for us to waste our time voting five times to reject changing the charter after this was added in the last election by the people of Halton City to change it and remove this, does not make sense to, to do. Now, this city, like I say, is a good city. We've got a lot of infrastructure needs working on, but there's been more talk on that commission and on this council on ethics policy. Well, a policy is just written, is filed away. Ethics is determined by the character of the people that look at it, and this is you folks. Now, I would like, and I will be quite clear, but why does this council and mayor want elected officials to have unlimited terms? The President of the United States, who makes $200,000 plus all benefits, is limited by the United States Constitution. Our charter limits members of this board whose salary is $10 a month. So I think it's a good idea to continue to limit. It's good for the person because I think that it does not do a person good to stay in one position, and I'll say seven years. I got out voluntary after seven years as mayor. I served five years as council member, and that's long enough for an unpaid position. Now, I would like for the council to maybe give me a reason, maybe I was wrong, maybe they are more advantages other than civic pride to, to serve.
I'll let, I'll let the other council members speak before I do. Councilmember Avery?
He answered my question.
Councilmember Williams?
Maybe I can shed a little light on your questions. First of all, term limits and nepotism. Nepotism on these boards, as far as members being appointed to boards, has been going on a long time before John Williams got on the council in 1998. And at this time, I don't have any members of my family serving on any boards, and due complaints from certain citizens, I couldn't get my family to serve on any of these boards anymore. The people on these boards, we've got a whole list here right now that we've got to fill, and due to some of the attitudes, we're having problems filling the boards. Not attitude to the council members, but attitude to some of the citizens, a very minority few of the citizens. And when I say that, a very small amount is what I'm speaking of. Term limits, when we discussed this in our meeting on Saturday, what we were saying, we want to throw that out to the voters. We don't want Jack Lewis to decide. We don't want Nancy Watkins to decide, John Williams, or any other member. We want to throw this out and let the citizens of Halton City decide whether or not they want term limits or do not want term limits. It's up to them. They're the voters. They have the right to know that. They have the right to vote on that. The nepotism, the same thing. The whole time, the last 10, 12 years, I've looked back through some of the records. You were on the council. You had family members on the council. I see Mr. Calvin White out there in the audience. He was on the Economic Development Board. His son was on the city council. I can look, not, not at that time, Gene, but they've been through there, and I can get Nancy or Helen, go get all the records. But for the last 10, 12, 13 years, something like that, there have been family members, directly and indirectly. I think you have a brother-in-law that's distantly related. And if these people want to come out, whether they're kin does or not, and they want to serve this city for free, we are not depriving them of that. I'm not here for the $20 a month. Every month when I get my check, I give it away to some organization. I've not took a check yet. I'm doing this for the love of my city. And if I wasn't doing this, I sure wouldn't be down here every other week for free complaining about what the people up here are doing.
Thank you. I would like to respond on the, my wife, I was at here for, did not serve while I was mayor of Halton City. And I repeat that, and I think it would be wrong for any mayor or any council member's wife or spouse to serve on a committee or be appointed. I have never appointed any of my relatives to any boards or commissions, so I will correct you that on that, Councilmember Williams. Now, you're throwing this out to the voters again on term limits. It sounds like a charter review. That was thrown out five times. It'd be like you guys, if something's rejected, y'all come back, keep bringing it up until you get it the way whoever wants it. Some way with this, how many times do we have to bring it before the voters to, to limit terms of elected officials? I mean, it looks like the pay would limit it. I appreciate your benevolence on giving $20 away. I, I think that's good. But if the people spoke in the last charter election, and they will speak again, and they may, that many more people may have changed their mind. So I have really no problem with it, except the Charter Review Commission, which was appointed by the mayor and council, is sort of a waste of our time for you folks to appoint us and ask us to bring recommendations, and we bring them, and then you say, well, the ones I agree with was fine, but those I don't agree with, we are going to take it to the people. So to me, that's not much confidence you placed in the appointment of your members to the Charter Review Commission. So thank you.
Mr. Lewis, let me respond to that if I might.
Okay. Thank you.
First of all, I'd like to ask you why you think relatives should not be allowed to serve their city. I've been involved in a lot of volunteer organizations and spent lots of years doing this with the chamber. And I got to tell you, good volunteers are hard to find, the people that will make a commitment and that will stick to it. And if a family member volunteers, for instance, say the Beautification Board or any, any board, and goes out on their workdays on Saturday or whatever, and I served, I was council liaison to that board for four years, and they work, and they plant trees, and they plant flowers, and they dig in the dirt. And I don't see, we have 37,200 people in this community. Our notebook is not even kind of full of someone who's wanting to say, please let me do that, please let me volunteer. So why do you feel, just because someone happens to be related to you, why do you feel they're not fit to serve?
I do not feel that they're not fit to serve. I think it's very good. What I feel is two reasons on why they should not serve. One, when a family, when it's a family affair, serving on a board or commission, which is not paid but has a lot of influence, you lose the effectiveness of that board. For instance, when you appointed your husband to the Charter Review Commission, and he resigned after it was brought up, and another member resigned.
I didn't appoint him, Mr. Lewis.
Okay. Whoever appointed, he was on the board, I was on it, and when he resigned, our board was in sort of a state of limbo confusion. So it's bad for the board members, for one thing. I think it's bad for families where all of the families are concentrating their volunteerism into one area, especially where the city. Now, the second is the influence on a board. Even though it's not paid, and it's a volunteer position, and we're all good citizens, there is bound to be some feeling, some influence from a council member when his spouse or brother-in-law, and that's by marriage to the, I think it's important, those words, that it was legal based on this affinity to a third degree, Charles Womack, who served many years for this city. But I think that when a board member appoints or is on there, your representative on that board is going to have more influence on whatever the issue is, whether it's monetary issues. So it's bad for the person, it's bad for the family, it's bad for the city. Nepotism, I will ask this, some of you who've served for many years, Councilmember Markham and others that have served before on the boards and were reelected, the word nepotism, even though it's violated, like you say, Councilwomen women, the nepotism law and all laws are violated. That's why I really don't see why changing a word in a thing is going to change anything anyway. It's the character of the people, because it can be in the charter, and still the person mayor met, the next council, the next mayor may not abide by it. So really, I feel like nepotism, it's also like a lot of other words that have changed meaning, still means the same thing it did back in 1969 when we served here, and I don't believe we really ever discussed ethics or nepotism, and maybe we should revise this, this nepotism. In other words, it still means the same thing today as it meant then. So I have a little bit of respect for my forefathers to realize, hey, if it was good for them, it's good for us. I don't know if that's an answer or statement. Was that a?
Well, that's probably true of several of the changes that are being made in the charter because, for instance, the terms of elected officials was never in the charter until the last time it was revised.
Right.
And I, for one, think the citizens are smart enough to, to vote for it, and I'm sure you do, too.
I think they were the last time. I think they were smart enough the last time.
And that's why we have elections.
Right.
Councilmember Avery?
You mentioned Charles, former mayor Womack.
Yes.
Now, he was on the council the same time you were mayor, correct?
Yes.
What's the difference between him being on the council with you and having a, a family member of a council member serving on another board? What's the difference?
What's the difference?
Yes, sir. Apparently, in your eyes, there is a difference.
Yes, there is. In fact, he was elected by the people.
Okay.
Who might have told them, the man is not related, I'd never met the man until 1949, so he is not, he's not blood relation to me, and there's no problem with the way the word reads now. If you look up the word affinity and consentity, there's no problem legally or morally. And a lot of things can be legal and yet be wrong, and y'all know that. There's a lot of things that are legal that are wrong. Now, Councilman Womack was elected for several terms on the council, and he was elected by a mayor, but I didn't feel like getting up here and telling people they didn't know what they were doing.
Okay. Then we, being council members, we're elected for our judgment, correct? Our decision-making.
Well, that's probably theory. I don't think it's correct.
Well, the people elect us. People elect us because they feel we're the most qualified candidate for the job. Now.
Obviously.
I don't believe that either.
Now, then, what difference, if we feel that a certain individual is qualified to serve on a particular board, then what you're doing is questioning our, you're questioning our, our, our judgment, basically is what you're doing, correct?
Yes.
Now, that's not to say, then why is it that you're not questioning why you were appointed to that board? How are we to know that you- How are we to know that you were the most qualified person to be on the Charter Review Board?
You wouldn't. You probably never voted for me.
I wasn't on the council at that time.
You made a judgment when you voted. People put me in office, that's why I said that.
Okay, let's don't go back into.
Let's go back into the past.
Do you have, is that it? Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm ready to make a motion if you're prepared to entertain one.
All right, just one moment. I have one more light. Councilmember Williams.
I have one other item, just a simple question for Mr. Lewis. The term limits, what this is, it decides on whether a council member can stay up here for a certain amount of years.
Right.
We have around 37,000 voters in Houghton City, or citizens of Houghton City. There's around 17,000 voters, and there's around 1,700 voters that voted in the last election. Now, wouldn't it be fair to give these voters, even if 17,000 of them wanted to go out and vote, don't you think the citizens of Houghton City would be intelligent enough to figure out whether or not they wanted term limits and whether or not they wanted nepotism to read paid or non-paid? Don't you think they would probably be intelligent enough to figure that out on their own?
I really do, and I think they will find, because I'm not up here to try to stop this, because I realize your minds are made up and decisions are made in back rooms. But, yes, they're intelligent enough, and they will make a decision. I will abide by it. So they are good.
It's very intelligent. In fact, they were intelligent enough in the last charter election to limit the terms. And same way with the Charter Review Commission. We were intelligent enough, after five votes, to not even bring it up again. We had faith in the vote in the last charter election. So we're, and it seems like to me, the mayor and the council now is questioning the intelligence of the people who voted in that last election, who are going to be voting probably in this one, you know, 1,500, 1,700, so.
I think it would be fair to let the citizens to make up their own mind. And this was, yes, if we want to call this the back room, it was decided back here in the back room, but it was a called meeting. And if the citizens won't term limits, they'll vote them in. If they don't want them, they'll vote them out. And I'm prepared to probably second what Phil's fixing to make the motion on.
Okay, that is.
I hope he makes the right motion.
Okay, so that's August the 16th, and the people of Houghton City, we urge 17,000, I'd be to go out and tell them again. We told them in the Charter Review Commission five times, and they kept bringing it up. And we'll have another election.
Mr. Lewis?
Thank you.
Sounds like you're campaigning. Well, you'll have to do it from another venue. Councilmember Henslering.
I just wanted to point out a couple of key dates. One is, yes, August the 12th is the Saturday the election will take place. But early voting will take place on July 26th, and I imagine it'll be up here at City Hall. And also, it'll probably have a Saturday or a couple, it will not have a Saturday format at all, just at City Hall, 8 to 5, starting on July 26th. And just a question to Wayne Olson, our city attorney, regarding the vote on this particular agenda item. I know in the workshop, we voted on each individual item by itself, and I think we only had five or six items that we looked at. Now we're up to nine, but because of, you know, very valid reasons. Can this be voted on item by item, or does it need to be voted in as one single ordinance, one single vote?
Your agenda item tonight is to adopt an ordinance for calling the election with specified propositions, so we will take one vote. Either vote for the motion or against it.
Okay. Well, I'm going to support the putting it forward, but I do want to state for the record my opposition to a couple of the propositions that we've included, and that's proposition number three, which deals with the term limits, which was added by the city council. And also, item number six, which deals with the idea of nepotism. So I just want to state that for the record, but I think there's a lot of good that's going to be in this charter amendment, and I'll support a motion for it.
And regardless, I do thank the Charter Review Committee for serving, particularly for as long as they did, because it's true what Mr. Lewis said. They did have to bring up things constantly and revisit them and change their mind and vote on them again and again. And they certainly, I don't think any of them thought they were in for that long a period of time. And Mr. Bill Lanford, who was the chairman of that committee, even gave up his Saturday to come up here and go over this with us. And I particularly want to thank him for doing that. And I just want to add my two cents worth to what some of the council members have said. I think y'all are smart enough to tell us what it is you want. And we're going to give you the opportunity to do that, I hope. Councilmember Jennings, it's back to you for a motion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In the front room, in front of everyone in the city council chambers, and everyone watching on HCTV, at this moment, I would like to make a motion that we pass this agenda item as stated tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Williams.
I will wholeheartedly second.
I have a motion and a second. Gentlemen, please register your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Agenda item number 11 is a public hearing. Mr. Eisen.
The purpose of this public hearing is to consider an amendment to a conditional use permit for Craig's Collision Center, which is located near the corner of North Beach Street and McLean Street. The purpose of the revised conditional use permit request is to expand the site plan at this location to provide for additional vehicle storage.
As this is a public hearing, I will now open this public hearing. Is the applicant present? All right. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak for this agenda item? Anyone wishing to speak against? Then I'll close the public hearing and move to the corresponding ordinance, and we would be ready for a motion, council. Councilmember Williams.
Okay, Madam Mayor, thank you. I make a motion that we approve. Let's make sure I got the right one. Ordinance number 02000-019-15.
Thank you. Councilmember Markham.
Second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Councilmember Henslering, did you have discussion?
No, that was for a second.
Oh, okay. I have a motion and a second. Please register your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Agenda item number 13 is for a platte. Mr. Eisen.
This also is a public hearing. The purpose of the platte is actually a replat to divide an existing residential lot into two separate residential, single-family lots. The property consists of about a half an acre, located on the south side of McCullough Road, approximately 290 feet west of Salona Street.
Thank you. If there's no discussion, we'd be ready for a motion. Councilmember Henslering.
I make the motion that we approve platte P-010-00.
Thank you. Councilmember Patino.
That was for a second.
That was for a second? Okay. I have a motion and a second. Please register your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Our next agenda item is Visitors and Citizens Forum, and I do have some speaker cards filled out. Let's see.
13A.
13A comes after Visitors and Citizens Forum.
Excuse us.
That's okay.
Disregard.
Mr. Larry, I'm sorry, I can't read your last name, on Jane Anne.
Stanfield.
Mr. Stanfield, is that correct? I'm so sorry, I could not read that. Please state your name and address for the record.
Larry Stanfield, 5716 Jane Anne. First of all, I could apologize the way I dress. I get off at 6:00, I'm here at 7:00. There's not a lot of time.
We don't care.
We have a situation on Jane Anne Street and the 5600 block filtering over to the 5700 block. There is, at the address of 5620, these people have a swimming pool in the back of their house. They are giving swimming lessons to all of these children. And I have no objection whatsoever to that. I think it's great. There's two problems with this. First of all, they're cleaning their swimming pool out with a diatomaceous earth filter. This diatomaceous earth filter is a powder. They're emptying it into the street. They have three 4-inch holes drilled into the curb with PVC pipe all the way back to their backyard. At this very moment, you can drive to that area, and you will find all kinds of white powder in the gutter. I happen to live at the end of the block. I get it all. I track it into the house, I track it into the driveway, I track it in my car, and I track it everywhere. It is nothing in the world but a filtering system for this swimming pool. You and I both know what children do when they go to swimming pools. I don't think any of y'all would appreciate it if I dumped my sewage into the street. I really don't. Second of all, the main thing, the reason that I'm here, is we have one gigantic traffic jam. We have children from ages, I don't know, two on up, running back and forth across this street in the front of all of these cars. Somebody is going to be killed, and I don't want to be the one that does it. I honestly don't think I could live with myself the rest of whatever years I've got left, knowing that I killed one of those children at a swimming pool. Something has to be done about that, and I appreciate your time. Second of all, I'd like to say congratulations to Mr. Loth for winning that prize.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And we'll see that this gets passed along to the right department to check that out, Mr. Stanfield. The next speaker's request is Charles Smith. Mr. Smith? Please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Charles Smith, and I live 4936 Saucer. We was up last week, and Mr. Markham talked on their drainage system.
Yes, sir.
And Mr., I'm not going to get into that, that's a bad thing. But it was put on, my understanding, was put on the agenda, and that's been taken back off, and we'd like to know why.
I can't really address that right now. I can refer him to Mr. Slovak? Or you?
I talked to Mr. Slovak today.
Okay. All right, Ken, would you please discuss that with this?
He didn't talk to me today.
Okay, would you take this gentleman into your office and discuss that?
He don't tell me the same thing every time. I already talked to him.
Well, this is the Visitors and Citizens Forum, and since this is not an agenda item, we can't openly discuss it.
Can I say one thing else?
Yes, sir, you can.
From that doorway back that way, they lie to you people like men. That gentleman just out here told me this afternoon, two lies, sitting there looking at him. He told me that he looked, that the pictures had come back, he had looked through the tunnel, and there was no damage in it. And he turned right around and told me that the man that went out at 5:00, 4:30 or something, he called me on the answering machine, and his assistant that goes out and investigates stuff, that his assistant couldn't find the drainage. That's all I got to say.
Cody Thompson.
I went to this in 1985, and nothing but lies.
Mr. Thompson, are you, and there you are. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Cody Thompson. I live at 5717 Cedar Crest. And if one of y'all will hold this up there, I can read it without glasses. Okay? Now, Honorable Mayor and city council members, my name is Cody Thompson. My wife and family reside in Houghton City. Well, I'll give him a chance to cool down here. I attended Burdville Elementary, Houghton Junior High, Houghton High School, and I graduated from Houghton High School and the North Texas State University. I would like to take this opportunity to congratulate the electorate of Houghton City for electing a new slate of council members, and congratulate the new mayor pro team, John Williams. After this election, I found a whole new optimism for the city, and I know that the right thing, and I know that, right or wrong, you will all do what you think is best for the city as a whole, not what is wanted by narrow-minded few. And speaking of them, most being prior elected officials, Lewis, Jack Lewis, Stan White, Calvin White, Rum Ball, Womack, Larson, and the rest, it is very, very rare that I find myself in agreement with the sore losers, but I will agree with them from this perspective. There are a lot of used car lots, streets in ill repair, parks in bad shape, grass growing in the streets, city right-of-way not being mowed, drainage problems, et cetera. And most, if not all, of these problems existed or were created when they were in office, and they did not do one thing about them. So they're right, there's lots of problems for y'all to address, and due to lack of leadership in the past, you know, due to mainly lack of leadership in the past, I should say. But obviously, the electorate and myself think that you all would do a good job, that is, to acknowledge the problems, address them, and correct them, whether politically correct or not. I was somewhat entertained by Lieber and Calvin White's take on Houghton City in the Fort Worth Star Telegram. Both portrayed Houghton City as a racist, bigoted, and backward. I don't think they realize, when you belittle or make fun of a city's current leadership, you make fun of the majority of the people who elected those officials. I'm sure that all of the above also take great pride in Houghton City being dry. Why, I don't know. It's public record that it didn't keep Calvin White's son Stan, a former council member, from being arrested for drinking too much, when every city around us is wet and have no more alcohol-related arrests percentage-wise than Houghton City. If Mr. Lieber, Mr. Tinsley, and the Star Telegram continued to berate the city and its citizens, then you do what I did. You cancel your subscription to the Star Telegram, and if enough of you do so, I promise to reassess their stance. I would think that the former elected officials would take a hint from the electorate. They're not buying what you're preaching, and if they're not a part of the solution, then they're a part of the problem. Please, old guard, it's the year 2000. Let's go forward and do things differently, not like you used to. You used to got us where we're at. And do away with the phrase, "We've never done it that way before." Honorable Mayor and council members, I appreciate your time and wish each of you all of the luck in the world, and please, do the opposite of the old guard. Be positive, change things for the better, take action, and move forward. That's just my opinion and decision. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next agenda item will be announcements and/or events. Do I have any announcements from council members? Councilmember Henslering.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to thank Officer Mike Wilson of our Community Services Division for his time Saturday at the library. We had our, actually, our first quarterly meeting of all the block watch captains around the city, and we had a good response, and there was a lot of crime board members there. Mike did an excellent job. And I just tell the folks out there that our block watch captains, that we're going to be trying to do that once a quarter. So when you get your notification in the newsletter, please respond and attend. There was a lot of good information that was passed out, and just encourage everybody else to participate in the future. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Williams?
July 4th, Tuesday, 10:00 AM, Denton Highway, Stanley Keller Road. There'll be a parade pull out there, goes south on Denton Highway, turn right on Broadway, go to Houghton Road, left on Houghton Road, and the parade will end at the Houghton Road Park. 11 o'clock sharp, activities will begin. 12 o'clock, y'all heard earlier, the hot dog cooker, Bell Alton, will be there with his grill fired up. We're going to have 2,000 hot dogs, 1,000 nachos, 500 chips, and I hope we run out of food and have to go get some. We've got a, we've got a hot dog getting contest, and I've recused myself from that to make it fair to the rest of the citizens. But if anybody has any kind of special effect car, any float or anything, or any, we've urged the businesses and the clubs and communities, our beautification board and some of the other boards are going to have floats in this deal. The park's going to have some senior citizens are getting together, and they're decorating a float, and I'm anxious to see what Bertha and them come up with. But Ms. Golden Girl is here. Ms. Golden Girl, stand up a minute. This Bertha wrote, and she's Ms. Golden Girl. She will be leading the parade with our honorary parade marshal, and we nicknamed him Goldfinger. That's Cecil Pocalita. And we're looking very forward to this. We're going to have the dair van, we're going to have fire trucks and stuff in it. It's going to start at 11 o'clock in the morning, we're going to start eating at 12:00, we're going to finish at 3:00. Give everybody plenty of time to go home, get rest, and go watch fireworks at night. So we won't see y'all again between now and then. So happy 4th of July, and we hope to see you there.
Right. Anyone else? We received a congratulatory proclamation from our state representative, Vicky Truitt, in recognition of our 50th anniversary celebration. And she says, "It's an honor to recognize the wonderful history of this remarkable community. Throughout the last 50 years, the people of Houghton City have met the demands of change. You have adapted and are prepared for the next millennium. May prosperity and pride flourish as you continue to grow." And we will display this proudly. Thank you, Representative Truitt. And just a note to let you know that And just a note to let you know that we still have a few more days. The census is still going on. You have until July the 7th. So if you haven't sent in your application, if you haven't done your part, remember this means money to our community and services to you. So you still have a few days to get that done and we just urge you to do that, please. Council, any other announcements?
No.
All right. Mr. Eklund, just so you won't think I'm ignoring this, I need these turned in before the meeting starts. So I just want you to understand that.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a few comments for Mr. Cody Thompson.
No, sir, not, not this evening. Thank you.
Okay, I'll do it in a second.
We're moving on to other business.
I'll be outside.
And that would be agenda item number 3A. Mr. Eklund is asking for waiver of liens on property at 3629 Leighton. Mr. Eisen, do you want to expand on that?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Mr. Eklund had approached me last week with regard to a piece of property that has had on a couple of occasions hearings held by the Housing Board of Appeals to consider issuing an order to demolish a substandard structure at 3629 Leighton Avenue. After both of those hearings, the board had delayed action, giving the property owner a little bit more time to try to bring the property up to code and so far that has not happened. There's another hearing scheduled tomorrow night in front of that board. Mr. Eklund has indicated to me that he has some interest in trying to acquire the property and wondered if the city, in the interest of trying to assist with that exchange of the property so that it can be rehabilitated instead of torn down, has requested that you consider waiving some of the amounts due to the city on the property. Currently, there are weed liens, a street assessment, and current year taxes due to the city and to other taxing entities on the property. The council had talked about this a little bit in pre-council and the indications were at that time that you had some interest in going forward with waiving the weed liens on the property, which amounts to about $788 with stipulation that if anyone were to acquire the property to rehabilitate it, that that would, that waiver would go to whoever that property owner, it might be whether it be Mr. Eklund or someone else who might be able to acquire the property.
Mr. Eklund, I have a speaker's card for this agenda item. Do you want to come up and speak to the council about this? Please state your name and address for the record.
My name's Eklund. I live at 2532 Oakwood Terrace. I appreciate the council's discussion in the back room. I'm sorry I was still at work and I couldn't be there. This property is a perfect example of one that's deteriorated a neighborhood, caused a lot of concern with the neighbors. It burned over a year ago. It was probably, from my understanding from staff, a problem before that in the neighborhood and causing a lot of problems with property values in different areas. Over the process of these years and these problems, it's acquired these weed liens and now it's a terribly distressed problem, property. And this, this kind of idea, and I appreciate the idea whoever brought it up in the back room, whether I acquire the property or not, the idea is still the same. It's still the fact that the city is probably not going to recuperate this money. It's very likely that the city's going to end up with this property back and a more additional expense. This small investment in the city, go ahead and forego $788 of weed liens would certainly assist someone in bringing that property back and may make the difference between a go or no-go on this property. So if someone's able to acquire the property between now and tomorrow night, when the hearings board meets again and they can move forward, they'll have an opportunity to bring this property back and make it a successful part of the community rather than the negative aspect that it has now. So this concept, I think, I would like to see the city kind of think about on other properties around that come up, whoever might be interested, in an effort to, to encourage redevelopment and infill development in some of our older neighborhoods. You know, we, we talk about economic development on big scales, you know, and we have an Economic Development Director that's doing a fine job, but on these little bitty scales, I think it counts too, just in these little neighborhoods. So.
Well, it's revitalization and it makes sense. Thank you, Mr. Eklund. Councilmember Hurley?
I have a question for Mr. Eklund.
Walk back.
I was present at the substandard housing board hearing where you discussed the proposal of trying to buy the property.
Yes, sir.
Have you been successful in negotiating any?
Our negotiations are still, it's in his hands at this time, Mr. Hurley, and I just don't know what the answer is any more than anybody else in the world.
You're still not any closer to buying than you were?
I have the contract prepared for him. It's in his hands. If he signs it before the hearing board meets, we don't know what action they're going to take. So I've done what I can to accommodate the procedure. There's, I don't know what the hearing board is going to do and I don't know what the property owner is going to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Williams, we'll see.
Mr. Eklund, you said you didn't have a contract on that. I wanted to ask the city attorney or maybe Mr. Eisen or maybe Mr. Hurley could answer this. When this board meets tomorrow evening, will having a contract on this or something to that nature, will that have any bearing on putting off how long we can go through the procedure of not destroying the house or will they take that into effect or?
I believe the attorney could give you a better answer than I could.
Well, we'll see how good this is, but certainly that the board takes into consideration all factors that, that weigh into whether or not a house can be rehabilitated and their goal as our substandard housing board is to try to encourage houses to be rehabilitated if they can be done within a reasonable period of time. I know this particular property, although I'm not familiar with it specifically, has been a problem for a long while and at some point in time, the board's going to have to move forward and for, for the health and safety of the citizens, make a decision to have the house demolished if it can't be repaired. But certainly they'll take into consideration any factors which might make it feasible to repair the house.
Then I guess my next question would be maybe to the building inspector or maybe to, as far as, have they looked at the house? Does it look like it's going to be worth going to the expense? I know that we heard some different prices. You know, I just happened to be up here the other evening when they were discussing this and they told me that, I think the gentleman owns the house and I have compassion for him because he, I think he's owned the house for 30 something years, so it's been in the family for quite a while. But he had said something like $5,000, $6,000, $7,000 to repair it and I drove by the house and I'm not a carpenter, but I know that $5,000, $6,000, $7,000 to remodel doesn't go very far and I'm sure that it wouldn't go very far. Do you have any estimates or as far as what you?
Well, Councilman Williams, what the man had presented was the price for the parts that he had, and that was the $5,000 figure that, that was simply for the materials bid that he had had. That's the material that he brought forward.
No labor?
No labor.
Right.
No labor.
Right.
The labor's on top of that.
Has one of our city employees been in the house? Is that person here?
I see West back here.
Mr. Cotton Gang, could I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
The house on Leighton Avenue that's in question, have you been over and been inside the premises and inspected it?
No, sir. The inspection was made from the outside.
Was made from the outside. Could you see through the windows at that time or?
A little bit.
Okay, and as far as the structure, do you feel like the structure is, is safe from the ceiling down or can you tell without? I've never dealt with a burnt house is the reason I'm asking these questions and, you know, I know that, that there's a stream amount of weight put on a roof when you put the tresses in the roof and the roofing material on there and I'm concerned about if, if the structure itself is going to be strong enough.
I believe that the, the house could be repaired, feasible of repair, just depends on who is doing it. The building code allows for an eighth of an inch char, but that's on a two-by-six rafter. We've never allowed any charring. All the burned material would have to be brought out. Best that I remember, the roof has not even burned, has not begun to sag. It could be, it is feasible of repair, it just did not appear to me that it was feasible for Mr. Pearson to repair that. And that's what we're waiting on right now is, is to see if he can bring some documentation as to whether or not he could feasibly repair that structure, but it is my opinion it could be, yes.
In your opinion, the house is not totally burned out on the inside and not gutted? It's?
No, just the back. I would say the back 25% of the house.
Thank you, Mr. Cotton Gang.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Williams, maybe I can assist you in that. I have been through the house and I have been involved in four separate burnouts, all of which were worse than this one and we were able to bring them back to the city code in city of Fort Worth without any difficulty. And yes, you're right, we took, just pull off the entire roof, although it's not, from the outside, you wouldn't actually know. The roof's still there. It's my intention, if I acquire the property, to pull the entire roof off, all the tresses and everything and strip it all the way down, start over.
Okay, I know there's been an ongoing problem and there's some property owners over there that take quite a pride in their property that they have. And I, I want to get this expedited for them as quickly as possible.
Certainly.
Nobody wants a burnt house next door to them or down the street from them. And if you and Mr. Pearson, did you say his name was?
Yes.
Should y'all come to agreement and should the board go ahead and launch you more time, what timeframe would you be looking at before you would?
I'm, I'm looking forward to blasting away at that thing during my two weeks in July and actually make some serious production during July.
Such as drying?
No, we're not going to get that far. We'll, we'll try to get the roof on, you know, try to pull the roof off and get that back on again during July and then we'll, then we'll work away from there so that immediately the outside of it will look better.
Junk trash and debris?
That's, that's gone the first couple of days. That's the first thing.
I have no other questions.
Councilmember Markham?
Mayor, I'm just going to make a few comments, but I think Councilmember Williams hit on most of them. I just wanted to make sure that Mr. Eklund completely understood, being a council liaison to the hearings board, it's been in their lap for the last month and it's been more or less in your, in the owner's lap in the last two weeks. And I really feel like unless you and he can get something going by tomorrow night, they, they may go ahead and tear it down. Just want to make sure that you understood the limitations of time.
Yes, sir. I, I certainly would. If, if we're not, if we're not contracted or ready to go tomorrow night, then I understand the city's position. I would ask that if we do get contracted by tomorrow night, that the hearings board grant me a little slack so I can get in there and get the job done.
Well, you know, we as a council can look at it and the hearing board also can look at it. And I, you know, I hope that you and he work out something, but at the same time, you have to look out for the neighborhoods.
Yes, sir.
And the people on either side of the property. I think anyone in this room that would see the property would more than we feel for the joining property owners. So, I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Avery?
I have a question. Question for Mr. Eklund. Once the property's been rehabbed, what are your plans with the property?
Oh, I think there'll be a nice family move in there and they'll enjoy it.
You're buying the property for profit, basically, for a rental property?
I may use it for rental. I may sell it either way. My chief financial officer hasn't told me what I'm doing yet. As soon as she does, I'll let y'all know.
Let me ask you this. Now, you're asking us to waive the weed lien, correct?
Yes.
Which is $800?
Actually, I've asked for much more than that, but I think that's all y'all agreed to.
Would, would this be a deal killer for you and Mr., for the property owner? Should we not do this? Would that be a deal killer?
It's right there on the line. This is a very, very difficult property. It has five elements against it. It's got the liens, it's got four different sets of liens and taxes, it's got the property condition of the yard, okay, and it's a burnout. Normally, you only have to deal one or two or three of those items. This has all five items against it. So this, this is not the best deal in town. I felt like the neighborhood would be better served. I'm interested in doing the project because of the timeliness of it this summer, okay? It's there and I would like to give it a shot.
Now, when you say liens, are you talking about tax liens or are you talking about other liens besides that?
Well, we have, there's tax liens, there's.
Do you have a total on this?
The, the number I have is about $3,500.
$3,500?
Yes, sir. There's street assessment, the current government, the two weed liens and some back taxes, which I understand are current year taxes. So, you know, those are just the deals, the things that are there and the house.
Okay, well.
It's just not worth a whole lot.
Do you have a, the question was asked before, but do you have an approximation? We know what it's going to cost for the materials for the property. Do you have an idea what it's going to cost for labor?
I, I expect the whole project to be done for about $25,000 or $30,000, in between $25,000 and $30,000.
$25,000 and $30,000?
Yeah. And what we'll end up with at the end of the process is a house with central heat and air, which doesn't have there and a lot of the neighbors do or don't. It'll end up being the newest house on the block when we're done. You'll have a new roof, it'll have new everything in it, from countertops and flooring all the way up to the, to the top of the roof.
Okay. Well, that's, that's quite a bit of difference between the $6,000 and for, for the materials and then the $20,000, the $24,000 for what it's going to cost.
That's why I think the current owner's having some difficulty. Maybe he could raise the material, but he can't raise the rest of it. Okay, I can raise all of it. I can get the job done and put this house back in as a feasible part of our neighborhood in our city and tax.
Do you know what the square footage is on that house?
It's 1,180 square feet.
1,200, okay. And you're saying $800 would be a deal killer for you?
I, I'm making every effort to make this thing go and like I said, we're, we're down to the wire. If it doesn't go, I'm, I'm going to go on down the road because there's other things out there that, that are a lot less effort.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Williams?
Madam Mayor, I was, I noticed on here it's got street assessments and there's no way that we could waive street assessments, not when everybody else on that street's having to pay them. The taxes, the taxes are current at this time, is that correct? And I don't think it'd be the right thing.
I just got this tonight, so I haven't, yes, the taxes are current year taxes.
I don't think it'd be the right thing for us to do, waive taxes on property, you know, that's, they're current and we have quite a few more homeowners in town that we'd have to take in consideration, any kind of a, any kind of emotion we'd make on this now, which would probably set a precedent on what would go in the future. The next Mr. Eklund that come before us with a, with a proposal like this and we would have to look back and what did we do on the last one? I admire you for your, your willingness to go out and do this. I know you have a full-time job aside from this. I know you've got quite a bit of property that you've taken, making decent-looking property out that wasn't in real good shape when you got hold of it and I admire, I admire you for working with the city and doing that.
Ms. Williams, if I, if I may, you have, actually you have more than one choice that you could consider. You have the lien, the weed liens. If you, to take the interest out of the street assessment, the interest alone is $562.80. So you consider, you could consider just the weed liens or you could consider, you could consider the weed liens and the interest. So it gives you a few more ways to go there.
When I was going to get through bragging about all the good stuff you did to this house.
I know, I was trying to move it along a little bit.
If we did a way, if.
His halo is very well tarnished, let's.
If, if we did anything to do with the street assessments or the interest on that whatsoever, you know, I, I don't think it'd be fair to the rest of the citizens. Now the weed liens, if Mr., if Mr. Eklund thinks that this is a, will be a make or break deal on there, you know, I could see us waiving that, but if we do.
Would you like to make that motion?
Madam Mayor, I'm in line for a motion whenever you get ready.
Just a minute, I see another light. Hold on. Councilmember Avery?
Well, I have one question as for the city council. This one?
I'm not sure.
Since Mr. Eklund and I have business dealings, I should probably abstain, right?
I don't know what the extent of your business dealings are, but if you feel there's a conflict of interest, I would recommend that you abstain.
Okay, okay. In recommendation, I will abstain from voting.
All right. Now, Councilmember Williams, you may make your motion.
I would like to make a motion that on this property, not to Mr. Eklund, but on this property, should someone buy it to rebuild the house that's presently sitting on this property and will do that in timely manner, that we will waive the $788.47 lien. and will do that in timely manner, that we will waive the $788.47 weed liens. Period.
Okay. Councilmember Markham?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to second the motion, but there's one word that, in Councilmember Williams' motion that I would like some clarification on. That's the word timely. I don't know what you're looking at there, John.
I'm looking at last week, but we're not going to get that. And, West Cotton Gate?
Yes, sir.
What do you feel like would be a fair time? Should they do this, what's the length of time from the time that they take out their permits to do whatever they do? Is there a waiting time? Is there a period? Is there?
I would like to think that Ray or whoever did it could take out a permit within three days, if not the next day. I would say three days would be reasonable. Cleanup should start immediately and I think you'd agree to do that. The outside of the house hopefully could be completed within three weeks to a, to a month. And then the inside of the home will, you know, that's really not affecting a whole lot of people anyway. The outside is in pretty bad shape. For those of you that have seen it, I guess you already know that. But I would say that within the next 30 days, the outside needs to be looking like the rest of the houses on that block at minimum.
Is that feasible for you, Mr. Eklund?
Just a minute, please. We have a, the city attorney has some input.
Was his line up?
Yeah.
I didn't mean to cut you off, Councilmember Williams, but I do want to remind everybody, including Mr. Eklund, that this is a decision tonight on whether or not to, to waive. And we're trying to talk about what period of time we want to waive the weed lien for. But let's, let's recall that the ultimate decision before the, the housing board is whether or not to even grant an extension. Tomorrow night, they may order that this, this house be demolished. And I don't know, I have a brilliant suggestion on timing, but I, I would suggest that if you are going to waive the lien and you want to make it contingent upon a certain time, that, that you make it contingent upon whatever the, the housing board does tomorrow. And if they grant an extension of time to repair the house, then if it's repaired within that period of time, your waiver would be valid. And if it's not, then the house needs to be demolished.
We're doing part of their job, then?
Yeah, we don't want to do their job for them.
No, all we're going to do...
I mean, that's what, that's what the motion was. We'll make the motion to approve the waive the weed liens on the property if, this is on contention, if the board approves to let the house remain and be, be sold and repaired. And we'll leave that timely mannered up to their board and their decisions.
Councilmember Markham, second?
Is that...
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
A motion and a second. Please register your vote. Motion passes with Councilmember Everett abstaining. Thank you, Mr. Eklund.
Thank you.
Agenda item number 14 was put on the consent agenda. Agenda item number 15 is for feasibility study for our public works department and the garage. Mr. Eisen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
It's showtime.
During the current budget process or last year's budget process, funds were set aside in the operating budget to do a feasibility study of either expanding or rebuilding or starting all over again with regard to the city's public works maintenance facility. Mr. Randall Scott and Greg Conaway of Randall Scott Architects are here this evening to present the results of that study to the council.
Unless someone wants, wants to make a motion first. Please, please go ahead.
Thank you. I'm Randall Scott. I'm the owner of Randall Scott Architects. And with me is my associate Greg Conaway, who's done most of the work on this feasibility study. Wisely, I think the city has taken the opportunity to look at what can be done with this property and in light of the state representative's proclamation there is looking into the next millennium. And to that degree, we were privileged to do the feasibility study for the city of Halton City. And we have two scenarios that we studied. And I'm going to ask Greg to go through those since he did the bulk of the work on that and then I'll interject any additional thoughts as well.
Well, thank you. I'll try to be brief. The two schemes, the scheme A you see here in front of us, the two schemes, the difference is that scheme A houses all of the vehicle maintenance, all of the public works department shops and, and work facilities, but it does not house the public works offices. What we're, what we're striving for is a facility that houses the entire public works department and the vehicle maintenance departments for the city. What we found on the site is that due to size restrictions, that all of those could not be accommodated on a single-story facility. So that's what you see in, in site plan scheme A with the vehicle maintenance shops, large vehicles circulation around those shops and in the various public works shops and storage facilities spread out over the site. The southeast corner of the site plan you see here is actually a leased site that the city has a short-term lease on. There is an existing building on that site of about 4,200 square feet that we would propose that that building be used pretty much in its current condition. We would go in and do some, some interior partitions and such as that and maybe new lighting and such. But we would recommend that the city would not spend lots of money on that facility until that site maybe becomes owned by the city or under a long-term lease by the city. By the way, this, this scheme A houses 23,170 square feet of building area. And the cost for scheme A, by the way, our projected costs for that scheme are slightly over $3 million. Scheme B houses the entire public works and vehicle maintenance facility. It would have a public works office facility on the front side of the site with, of course, public parking. And both schemes is along the south edge of the site. And then vehicle access would be beyond the parking and off of Higgins Lane. Pretty much a very similar scheme, vehicle maintenance shops here in the center with a truck maneuvering around either side of that so the trucks can come in, long trucks with grade all and, and large equipment can come in and through the facility and back out and be able to maneuver. Again, the public works storage and shop facilities are around the perimeter with a vehicle storage and wash bay. This facility, 38,600 square feet, and the projected cost for that facility is about 4.48 million dollars. It does have a two-story section here on the front. This would be a large, high-bay vehicle maintenance facility. So one of the advantages of this facility is that the office building on the front would help to screen that large metal building behind it with a, hopefully a nicer, more appealing building, office building in the front.
Is Chuck, Chuck, are you here? Would you come forward a minute, please?
Certainly.
Which of these two would be the most user-friendly?
This one, obviously, because we would able to, be able to have our offices at the facility where the, the maintenance activities take place.
And you don't, I know what you're used to now, so anything's an improvement. But on this particular site plan, you don't see that the shops would interfere with what's happening in the offices?
They would be a...
Go to the microphone, please.
They'd actually be a little more isolated as far as...
Than you are now?
The, the separation would be cleaner than it is now. We have a pretty dusty problem right now with...
Yes, among other things.
Any electronic equipment, stuff like that.
I might also add, Madam Mayor, is in the, in the first scheme, where the public works offices are not located on this site, of course, you would be faced with the option or the necessity to have to find a nearby site, hopefully a nearby site in order to house those offices.
Right.
And so, so even though that scheme costs you less money, in the long run, it really doesn't.
It won't, you're right.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
Councilmember Jennings?
I was just going to ask if they could hold them both up at the same time like they're doing right now.
Like that.
The, the real, the real benefit to scheme B, if you will, is the fact that the two-story office function improves the city's image and improves the neighborhood. Whereas this scheme is going to be pretty much a utilitarian metal building and it's going to be fronting close to the street.
Right.
And you're going to see utility service vehicles being serviced and so forth and a truck yard. And the nice thing about this one is it's landscaped and it screens, there, there's a screen wall here on both schemes, actually. But, but this two-story office element gives a, a nicer image and really helps the city become a better neighbor, in my opinion, to the neighborhood and then screens this functional element that's back behind here.
I think if this were a business owner, we would prefer Plan B. Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The, the footprints look nearly identical. What was the overall difference in the square footage of the two proposed plans?
38,600 for scheme B, 30, 23,170 for scheme A.
So 15,000?
The difference is that this portion is two-story.
Okay, and that's roughly 15,000 square feet?
That's right.
And what was the diff...
Public works function.
Right. What was the difference in cost between the two?
3,050,000 per scheme B, 4,480,000 for scheme, I mean, for scheme B, 4,480,000, 3,050,000 per scheme A.
So roughly 1.4 million dollars for that additional 15,000 feet?
Yes, sir.
But what that doesn't include is the cost of going and, and building a separate public works office building on a separate site property across the street or somewhere else, which is going to make up the difference.
Well, not to mention the convenience.
We have that property under control there already.
Right.
Anything else would be a variable. Okay, that's all I had, thank you.
Councilmember Williams?
First of all, Mr. Kendrick, is the property we have now leased, is that shown on those?
Yes, this portion of the site.
That's that portion of the site right there?
And this is an existing building.
Okay, nothing will change with that part of the...
Not significantly. Obviously, we would need to go into that building and maybe add new doors to, to accommodate shops and add new partitions within it, maybe some lighting within it, things of that nature. But we wouldn't propose to do any very costly or significant changes to that building simply because you do not have it for a long-term period of time.
Okay, where would we repair the Quint truck?
Right, in this area. These bays are literally dry up the roof bays.
Okay, so you could put one in, one in two bays and solve that. Right now, we're having to work on some of our larger equipment outdoors?
The layout, the layout of the scheme is there are eight small bays, four entered from either side. But because there are doors on either side and it's, it's open, where you have a large truck or a large piece of equipment, it could be brought into the site on a large tractor-trailer truck driven through the bay out the other side and thereby leave the site.
Okay, I know we're quite cramped down there now. Is this going to give you plenty of office space? Or do you think we'll need to go two-story? Is all that single-story?
This is two-story.
That's two-story? Okay.
This is two-story and actually it has some space on the second floor that, that we would propose to go ahead and build that would be left as unfinished space. So you would have some, some storage space and some, some ability...
Would have room for expansion?
Yes, sir. Someone has mentioned that as possible record storage or things like that in the near future, but...
Okay, one other question, the condition of the tanks that we have there. I know that, what did you say, 130, 40, 50,000 to redo them?
We're painting this one right now.
In 100 and...
150,000, roughly.
What kind of life do we have in those left, do you know, or is it...
Tanks are designed with at least a 50-year life.
And how old are these two tanks?
This one's about two years old. This one was built in 85.
Okay.
Let's don't get off track. We're just supposed to decide if we want to do this feasibility study. That's all that's on the agenda tonight.
I was looking for more room.
One of the things that's critical to the, to the, to this, these two schools of work is this three-quarter acres right here. Because you've got 2.8 acres in the overall site, about half an acre is taken up by the water tanks. This is what really made it work. And that came out in the feasibility study, how difficult it was to make the site work. Until we found out this property was adjacent, it wasn't bad. And that's really what made the whole process work.
Yeah, one of the things you have to consider is that this is a working, existing site with buildings on it today that the departments that are housed in those buildings need to continue to operate. So one of the things we need to do is be able to phase the building of this project so that we can move existing departments out perhaps into this building on a temporarily, temporary basis while one building is removed and, and a new building is constructed. And thereby move the various departments around the site as we, as we build out the site.
They're not operating efficiently now. So it, you know, it ends up...
Is that your pardon?
Well, you're not because you can't. It has nothing to do with, with the supervision there. I'll be sure and get that out. Are there any other questions from council? Thank you, gentlemen. We'd be in line for a motion.
Yes, it is. Yes, sir.
Councilmember Patino?
Yes, I'd be ready for a motion and I guess the motion would be to go ahead with the study on this feasibility. Is this correct?
All right, that's correct. Thank you. Councilmember?
I'll make a motion to, to go ahead with scheme B.
Thank you. Councilmember Henslerling?
Yes, for a second.
I have a motion and a second. Please register your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Ladies and gentlemen, I hate to do this to you. Most of my colleagues have taken their own break, but I have not. We're going to, we're going to recess for just a few minutes. What you, what you want with this agenda item?
I caught that. I've been around Mr. Eisen for two years now. I can't briefly do anything. The fire service board was started a few months ago. And at the time this board was started, we've got some very good personnel on this board and they're doing some very good work within the city. They've started on Southern Halton City and they're putting fire smoke detectors in homes that don't have them. I forgot what the percentage was. Well, the city man, or the fire marshal told us, fire chief, but it's quite a high percentage. And without a budget to work with, it gets kind of disheartening if you're on a board or commission and don't have a budget. And they're not getting very much money from the water bills. And if anybody out there wants to contribute more to their water bill via the fire service board, we would appreciate that. But I would like to present a deal to the council since the budget time won't come up for this until October to appropriate $1,500 for this board to operate on until they can be figured into the next year's budget.
Thank you. Councilmember Henslerling?
Yes, for a second.
That's for a second. Was that actually a motion, John?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. I missed that. I'm sorry. I have a, I have a motion and a second. Please register your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Now we'll go back to agenda item number 16, which is C3, C4 zoning. Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I got short-changed.
What happened? Oh, you're...
I don't know. Okay, there we go. I got a little stretched out. Two weeks ago, we had an item on the agenda for C3, C4 zoning. And the city council at that time instructed staff to rewrite the zoning ordinance of the city of Halton City, taking into consideration some items that we had all discussed and voted on. Since that time, I've been approached by several citizens, three being a number, and two business owners that had questions and concerns about the, the proposal as was passed two weeks ago. As was stated earlier tonight, you know, we did vote on this two weeks ago and I did get my way. So I should let this lie. But I'm not going to do that because I'm not satisfied with it. I'm going to bring it back up and address the concerns of the people that have called me. Some of the citizens said that they didn't really have a problem with the proposal other than the fact that there were, there was really no teeth in it as far as, as the ability to police the way things were done. There were, there was no burden on the, on the people seeking zoning and, and changing their zoning. Two of the business owners that I talked to owned M1 or M2 property. And the way that the proposal was passed two weeks ago, if they had a C3 operation, automotive-related operation, that was... operation that was doing repairs in one of their automotive, in one of their strip centers, M-one, M-two strip centers, and they lost that tenant, the way that it was passed two weeks ago, they would not have the ability to go back in and re-rent or re-lease that property to another C-three operation. It was brought to my attention that we had brought some undue stress or burdens on people in C-three. An example would be a, a place on Airport Freeway that does radio installation. They do so by use of a repair order. A customer brings their vehicle in, they write a repair order on it, just like an automotive repair facility was, to install radios or stereos in these vehicles. As the way the proposal stood two weeks ago, it would necessitate that they change their zoning to C-four. Although that was not the intent, that would truly be the, the letter of the, of the proposal as it was stated. So what I've done is gone back and prepared a compromise and everyone on the council has a copy of it. But basically, what I would like to do is, is bring this up for discussion with my fellow council members and give you the, the way that I would propose to change the way we instruct staff to write this, by taking into consideration these concerns. Number one would be to place all automotive-related businesses other than wholesale and retail sales, paint and body shops, which would require the use of a paint booth, and junkyards in the C-three zoning class as legal allowed uses. Number two would be to place all automotive paint and body repair and all wholesale or retail sales operations in the C-four zoning class as legally allowed uses. We would require all existing sales facilities and paint and body operations presently zoned C-three, legal non-conforming, to seek an upgrade to C-four within a period of six months of final reading. This upgrade would be offered with no additional restriction or cost to the applicant. After six months, persons failing to comply would forfeit their current grandfather status and have their occupancy privileges revoked. This would effectively restrict any new C-four automotive sales operations as well as force those unwilling to upgrade from continued operation within our city. Number three would be to increase regulations for businesses operating in the C-three and C-four class to address the concerns of the citizens. This could be helped in part by the use of code enforcement inspections on a six-day-per-week schedule, effective immediately. For those of you that don't know this fact, our city code officers were out this past Saturday looking for code violations. I would like that to continue in all areas of the city, not just having to do with C-three and C-four. No inoperable vehicles would be stored over twenty-four hours unless inside a building or behind an approved screening device. All repairs to vehicles must be made under roof or canopy. Limit vehicles parked in unscreened areas to require that state license and inspection certificates be valid. Current license and inspection would not be a requirement in the C-four class as they are not required by the state for any sales operation. But inoperable vehicles would have to meet all screening devices in this particular zoning classification. No parts of any vehicle under repair, other than accessories displayed for sale, will be stored outside the businesses unless they are behind an approved screening device. Consider the possible issuance of a city license for automobile repair operations within the C-three zoning class. Licensing could be a viable and effective tool to force cleanup and would be more flexible than zoning in attaining specialized results. Allow junkyards only in the M-two class with a conditional use permit as before. All zoning classes, with the exception of C-four, would be cumulative. Paint and body operations and the sale of any vehicle, other than those vehicles attained and resold as a result of a duly authorized mechanic lane, would be allowed only in the C-four zoning property. Any C-three use could be allowed in M-one and M-two zoning class. This would address the concerns of small automotive repair facilities, renting space in an industrial strip center. What I've attempted to do with, with these particular ideas is to take into consideration the concerns of all the people that I spoke with and to look at this again in hopes that we, we come up with a document that the business community can live with and the citizens can live with and the city of Haltem City can live with, with as little stress and red tape as possible. I would certainly be happy to answer any questions pertaining to my ideas here and I would also wish that any of you that had any discussion on, on any other ideas pertaining to this would chime in at this time.
Thank you. Councilmember Williams?
Madam Mayor, I have on record with the city secretary a statement of recusal from any discussion in a matter of this nature since I own property that is in this or could be covered by this, so at this time I will leave the room.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Hurley?
Mr. Jennings, on your proposal, what about repair work of just any kind out in the open?
Automotive repair would be a C-three zoning classification under this proposal as it is now. The regulations for, for automotive repair would be that all repair would have to be done inside the building or under a canopy, as in the, say a muffler shop or something that has a, an awning over a rack where they put mufflers on. No repair could be done, other than changing a battery or tire, which is, you know, normal maintenance, no heavy line repair of any kind could be done outside the building or out from under a canopy.
How would Chapter, or Item Eleven, in regards to the sale of a vehicle, how would this impact the citizens throughout the city that want to put a vehicle up for sale?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
In Item Eleven?
Uh-huh.
Where an individual has a car for sale?
Okay.
You see them all over town.
Okay.
Would this be strict?
Okay, this is, this proposal that I have here is only pertaining to C-three and C-four zone property. Ordinances that we have on the books currently, to the best of my knowledge, would preclude anyone from parking automobiles for sale, say, on the Winn-Dixie parking lot. That would be an item for code enforcement and should be looked into now that we have code enforcement on the weekends. That's usually done on the weekends because to this point, we haven't had anyone out looking for that. What we're trying to do here is there, there are people in the C-three classification, I'll give you an example, you take your car to a transmission shop and you have a nine-hundred-dollar bill against it. And when it, when the vehicle's finished, you determine you don't have nine-hundred dollars. The mechanic in the state of Texas has the right to secure a mechanic's lane. Once he, the mechanic's lane clears, he has clear title to that vehicle. He has the ability to sell that vehicle. He could not sell it in a C-three classification if you did not make exception in the, in that zoning that would say, with the exception of an authorized mechanic's lane. So you do not stop him from selling a vehicle that he has title to, but you do not force him to have to be zone C-four as a person that makes their entire living wholesaling and retailing vehicles.
Thank you.
Councilmember Markham?
Thank you, Mayor. I've had, you know, we've all had a little time to read this and, and hear Councilmember Jennings explain. Bob kind of hit on what I was going to ask Mr. Jennings about, you know, about the repairs being underneath a canopy, but you could go ahead and, and do some simple things like change a tire, battery, but you just don't want a car sitting up on jack stands for-
Correct.
-a day or two. One thing quickly comes to mind and, and I'm sure some other members have, have some questions. I know we have two or three muffler shops around town and I, I know that there's RVs around town and they, they're not going to be able to fit into your smaller garages. Would, could we work it where they would be allowed to put a muffler or exhaust system or, I don't guess I know how to word what I'm trying to say, but I think we know what I, what I mean. They need to, they need to be able to have some time to, to work on a, on a vehicle like that.
I agree. I, I think that could be done, you know, all things can be accomplished if, if you exchange ideas and I think that could be done with a codicil to that particular item that would state a, a time limit. You know, all vehicles would be repaired inside the facility or under canopy, with the exception of maintenance-related repairs that can be accomplished in a period of three hours or less. The problem that you're going to run into there is enforcement. You know, who's to say this vehicle's been sitting here one hour or this vehicle's been sitting here three hours? I, I don't have an answer to that question.
Well, I don't either, Phil, but say if I had a motorhome and I took it up here at the muffler shop on Broadway and we had a problem underneath it, we didn't know what it was till we got there, found the part, and we can't get the part for three days and we can't move it, you know? We may have to have some leeway in that respect.
Okay. The, the only thing that would, would cover that in this particular proposal, as I have it stated here, is that it would have to be behind an approved screening device.
Yeah, I understand.
You know, if they had an approved screening device, then the vehicle could be stored there. If they did not have an approved screening device, I don't know what the answer to your question is. I have talked to, to the owner of a muffler shop on Broad, Broadway, excuse me, Bellnap, and at one time, they had plans to enclose their outside muffler, muffler installation rack behind an eight-foot-tall wooden fence. That would be a possibility. What I'm trying to do here is to please about ninety-four percent of the people. I'm not going to please a hundred percent of the people.
I understand.
I'm trying to make it as user-friendly on the business owners as I am on the citizens. And there's, there's a happy medium that can be reached in here somewhere. I just don't feel good with the proposal as it was passed, discussed and passed two weeks ago. I think it, I think it does impose undue hardship on people in C-three. I, I think it does not properly address the concerns of the citizenry as far as the possibility of, of, of another car sales facility opening up somewhere in the city. With the proposals as it is stated here, the only way that you could open up a car sales facility in the city of Haltem City would be to seek C-four zoning and it would have to go through the Planning and Zoning Commission and, and be approved by them and sent to the city council with recommendations that it be approved and then the council would have to vote on an approving.
Right.
So that would be the only possible way you, I mean, it, everyone would have their zoning. That was one of the things that the, that the business owners complained about. We do not have, we cannot legally operate as a legal entity in any zoning classification that would address this. The, the way the proposal was passed two weeks ago addressed it, but I feel this is a much better proposal. Is it perfect? No, it's not. And I certainly, I certainly would appreciate any input on how it can be changed to be made any better, but we, I, I feel like we have to do something to go back and address those concerns that I hadn't taken into consideration two weeks ago.
Well, I think it, I think it's very difficult and I, I applaud what you've done. You've done a marvelous job and it's very difficult for you or any member of the council to, to foresee every little incident that, that's going to come down the road. But I think we do need to allow some leeway that, that we can live with. That's all I have for right now, Mayor.
As far as the RV, the way I understand it right now, the, the question that you brought up, they, they could do the repairs under a canopy or behind a screening device.
Correct.
If they don't have such now, they have six months in which to, to get that. Is that correct?
That would be correct.
I don't have any lights on right now, so I have a speaker's card from Randy Hafley. Randy, do you want to come forward? Name and address for the record, please.
I'm Randy Hafley. I live at twenty-six oh six Perkins in Arlington. My business address is sixty-three thirty-three Airport Freeway in Haltem City. What I came up here to talk about tonight is a real-world situation that has occurred in our business that goes right down the line with what you're talking about here. I own and operate Randall Management. We have probably, I don't know, thirty-five acres in Haltem City, some eighty-nine lease properties, commercial and industrial in Haltem City. We were approached by the, one of the top five motorcycle manufacturers in the world to locate at our property at twenty-three thirty-three Menace, right off Airport Freeway. And had the building ready to go. They needed to make a deal to move an operation here, distributorship that was going to move from Plano over to here. And I'm not up here, by the way, tonight to make my case for this particular deal, but I do want to state, I want to talk about user-unfriendly because we got a situation in this town right now that is user-unfriendly and I think you need to know about it. Building had its CO. We needed a CO in order to turn the power on, so the building inspectors had been down there, everything checked out, we had the CO and, so there were no life, safety issues, anything like that. The tenant came up last week to get the CO put in her name, found that we, even though we are in a M-one zoning down there, industrial zoning, we couldn't retail-sell motorcycles or fix them there. And we're not talking about a junky place, we're talking about a carpeted showroom, motorcycles on display. But even in what I see here, you talk about autos, you talk about vehicles, I don't know if you really mean motorcycles or how about boats? These are not bad businesses. I'm not, I don't have an agenda one way or the other on used car lots, but I do think this is an application that we shouldn't be put through the baloney of this conditional use permit to put this tenant in down there. Now, I can get the tenant in to fix motorcycles back there, but he can't sell them. Now, which is the nastier of the two businesses? They like the location because of the visibility from Airport Freeway. A lot of these tenants come to us and in the real world, this deal came together in about five to six days. They don't have ninety days, which is what I'm told that this conditional use permit is going to take. Neither would the manufacturer of the motorcycles give them the franchise, allow it to move over from Plano over to here without a signed lease. We do have a signed lease, we had to give them an out if it doesn't go through. Part of what we have to do with this conditional use permit application is we have to have a drainage study. Site's covered in concrete. It's part of the floodplain study from long ago. Why should we have to do that? That's baloney. It's not a brand-new building. Needed a site plan. We bought that building from the federal government. We've got a survey. We had to hire an architect to go out and draw what was there, but we aren't, we're not asking for structural modification or appearance modification or doing anything that's out of the character of the neighborhood. It is zoned industrial. It's got the Motel Six or Seven or whatever it's called now in front of it. I have to say that my dealings with the staff, Karen Mitchell was very helpful to me and over a two or three-day period, so was Wes and, and the other people I met with, but their hands are tied. You've got these ordinance in, in here. As I read what I've just seen for the first time tonight, and I'm, I'm not sure that I understand it, but it looks like even in that situation, to have retail sales of motorcycles and it does not talk about that here, the cumulative zoning, I'd still have to come for a conditional use permit. If you're going to require the conditional use permit and be user-friendly, then you're going to have to figure out some way that that happens in a time span of less than ninety days. You're going to have to figure out an excel, and I mean, and I don't mean thirty days either. That's also a deal killer. That process, if you insist on having it, needs to occur quickly, but I think it's also a huge waste of the staff's time and a huge waste of your time if- if you're the one that hears it, which apparently you are because I see one up here for Craig Automotive, who's another customer of ours that we just built for last week over, or last year over on Beach Street. Why do something like that for something that has a 99.9% chance that you're going to pass, you just interjected? A mountain of paperwork, a lot of hassle, and it's going through anyway unless the guys take a hike and go back to Plano or some other place. So I think it really needs a lot of, in the real world, there's some stuff going on out here that is a lot tougher than the, to satisfy than what I see on paper right now. I think you need to get rid of the whole process of the conditional use permit. If we're zoned M1 or M2, we ought to be able to do the things that are normally permitted in a light industrial or heavy industrial zoning. That's my story, and I'm sticking to it.
Thank you, Mr. Heffley. Councilmember Hanserling?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Like Mr. Heffley said, this is the first that I've seen it too. This was, this document that Councilmember Jennings is proposing here was given to us during pre-council chambers, and I must say, really haven't had a good opportunity to digest all of it, and I do have a ton of questions. And I really don't know where to start. I guess the main thing was, there's quite a big difference between, I think when I read the minutes from the last meeting as far as what that proposed ordinance was versus what this is, is this is very much more detailed. But I guess, I guess I'll just start with my questions primarily directed at staff. If I could have Karen Mitchell, the Planning and Zoning Director, come out, I'd like to ask her a few questions. And I guess before I start asking you questions, because this is new to you as well, you got this tonight, and I guess I'll direct the question to Councilmember Jennings, is this is something that was just pretty much finished product today and compiled today such that staff hadn't really had a chance to absorb it and digest it? I will say that I think we spent, as a council, as a city, as citizens, planning zoning folks, business folks, we spent, you can correct me, five workshops in eight, nine, 10 months in various workshops trying to get all the input on this particular issue to find out how is going to benefit the city and both positively and negatively. There's going to be some philosophical differences, of course, but I'm just wondering generically, Karen, how this proposed ordinance compares what was the outcome of the summation of the workshops that we had? I mean, is this too premature for you to really give an answer to that question?
Yeah, it is, because this is, I've been going through this and trying to, try to simplify it as best to see how we could fit this into an ordinance, and I think I'd need a little bit more time to digest it.
Are there any obvious things that jump out of here at you that might be illegal?
Well, the only one, and I think that probably Wayne's going to want to have time to digest it, but just the first thing that kind of jumped out at me had to do with the grandfather status and having their privileges, occupancy privileges revoked. And of course, that's something that I think is a definite legal question that Wayne will probably want to look into.
Is that something he's in a position to maybe talk about tonight? Or have you seen this, Wayne? Have you seen this document?
Just tonight, Gene.
Just tonight? Okay.
So, no, I think it'd be premature for me to address any legal issues on this. If the council wants to move forward with this, of course, I'll give my comments to P&amp;Z and council as it goes through the process, and we'll refine the ordinance, and you can count on me advising you whether I think there's a concern about any particular issue that the council might want to adopt, and I'll bring that to you well in advance of you voting on it.
And there might not be any legal problem with us pushing, not pushing, but recommending to P&amp;Z an illegal document or an idea, a concept that might not pass muster in the court. Would you recommend that we make sure we have a few of our Ts crossed and a few of our Is dotted before we were to push this back to P&amp;Z?
I'll go with the council on this one. Whatever you want to do, we'll make it work. However you want to get there, we'll make it work, so.
Okay. Thanks for being flexible.
You bet.
My questions really, as I was going through here and reading each section, it talks generically about wholesale and retail sales, and I know, and this is really for you, Karen, because you can answer some of these more particular questions. There's quite a few types of uses that are listed in these categories.
Both.
In permitted and in conditional uses. We're only talking about a particular use, and I think Mr. Heffley touched on it, you know, boats, motorcycles, there's probably, and I'm not, I can tell you, I'm not 100% versed on the different uses. Are we missing, are we only doing half a job here?
Well, the ordinance right now refers to automobiles, motorcycles, and boats, and they don't include recreational vehicles right now. And so that's what our current ordinance talks about. So I guess what you would probably want to do is come up with a definition of, you know, fine-tune your list of what types of automobiles are you talking about? Are you talking about, do you want to put the RVs in there? Do you want to put motorcycles? Do you want to put trucks? You know, come up with a refined list of exactly, you know, what this group would be.
Okay. Item two, it deals with the non-conforming, the six months, and it's talking specifically about the auto-related wholesale and retail sales. Can we legally do that? Can we pick a use out of a zoning ordinance and treat it in this fashion?
Again, I'm going to have to defer to Wayne on that one.
Yes, you can, under the right circumstances. You can provide for an amortization of non-conforming uses.
Okay.
In specific zoning districts, and the issue's going to be whether or not we structured it in a manner that is fair and reasonable to the affected uses.
I remember when amortization was talked about in the workshop, and I know it was from the minutes of the meeting last time, it was stated that we really quit having workshops because we had a lack of attendance, and we really didn't have a lack of attendance. We had a lack of major topics that the council agreed on discussing. We got all those topics off of our list, and we're in a position to make a decision. Unfortunately, we weren't able to make a decision. But one of the things that people ran from was amortization, because that's a pretty frightening concept to amortize something out, because basically you're saying, you business or you use, we don't want you, and we're going to do away with you over time, and you have to do it in a, you know, economically feasible way so they don't lose their investment, et cetera, et cetera. And there was a real uproar from the business community to think about the concept of amortization. And that's what I see part of this is maybe looking at. I don't think that's going to be a, we're going to have positive feedback from the business community if we're going to try to attempt to do that, so. And I guess, you know, Councilmember Jennings, it's a little too early for me to really understand if that's what you're talking about here, if that's the implication. Do we have any idea, well, this is more of a, I won't go into that. I guess the other particular things here, are some of these things that are listed, or we already have on our books to do, and some of these are related really to maybe our building official, Wes Cotton game, but Karen, can you answer any of these as far as the inoperable vehicles stored 24 hours? Or any of these items that just come out to you that, we've already got it on our ordinance?
Yeah, and Wes may be the better person to ask about that. It's my understanding, and I'm not well-versed in that particular ordinance, but it's my understanding, we have an ordinance on the book that deals with any non-operable vehicles. And like I said, that's not part of the zoning ordinance, but it's actually its own separate ordinance, and Wes may be the right person for you to ask those questions, too.
Okay. Well, we won't, I don't want to split hairs on some of these things, but some of them we've already got on the box and on the books, and we're doing it through code enforcement. Some of them are going to be in the zoning ordinance, and we'll have to delineate. So some of these we're already doing, but I think they're worthwhile things to do because they do, they offer a benefit to the city. My question to you is, what about the Maun-Paul Top Auto Establishments State Inspection on the corner of Denton Highway and Stanley Keller? I have no idea what their zoning is, but they do an auto-related service and it's state inspections. And I'm saying, maybe they're in a C-1 or C-2 zone? How are they going to be affected by this? Are they going to be considered non-conforming immediately?
Shouldn't be affected at all in C-1 or C-2.
I honestly, I don't know the answer to that question. I know that the way that it was proposed at the last meeting, and Mr. Jennings and I had talked about this the day after the meeting, that that would have probably had an effect on a service station that actually did some type of minor repair work, whether it is change the tire or whatever.
Right.
Again, I haven't had an opportunity to really look into this in detail, but Mr. Jennings is saying it shouldn't have any effect on them at all, and so this would have...
They're in C-3 and C-4.
But if a business has a C-1 zone and they're, you know, close to the residence, which C-1 zones are close to residences, and they're providing an auto-related service by saying you're an auto-related service, you can only go in C-3 or C-4.
That's not what we're saying.
Is that not what you're saying?
No, that's not what, that's what we said two weeks ago, but that's what we're trying to fix. Before we, two weeks ago, we stated that any, any operation that did an automotive-related service on a repair order would have to be rezoned, and I stated tonight that what I'm trying to get done by these proposals is to go back and revisit that. This should not affect C-1 or C-2 zoning in any way. This will only affect C-3 and C-4 zoning and operations conducted within those categories.
And Mr. Jennings, if I may, for clarification purposes, on number one, and maybe this is what Councilmember Hanserling's saying, I don't really know. If you're saying that place all automotive-related businesses other than the wholesale and retail sales, paint and body shops, et cetera, in the C-3 classification, if we have a service station that does the changing of the belt or anything like that that's allowed in a C-1, will it be able to stay in the C-1?
It should stay where it's at, yeah.
Okay.
First of all, let me say that I'm not a planning coordinator. I'm not a lawyer. I do not write documents like this for a living, and I never purported to be either of those two things. This is a list of ideas for discussion, which is what I hope we're doing right now, and open to any type of input. Basically, what I envision with this document is that city staff would look at it, and we would answer these questions tonight, and within a reasonable amount of time, we'd come back to city council with a proposal taking what we come to a consensus on tonight and putting that in the form of an ordinance or of a zoning proposal, using your knowledge and your experience, because that's not what I'm trying to do here. Yeah, I think that what we did two weeks ago was, we did address that, and we did say, if you have a service station, you're going to have to be in a different zoning classification. That's not right. That's just like the deal over on Airport Freeway that puts in radios. They should not be rezoned, basically, because they're doing business on a repair order. The way I envision this to work is it would only affect C-3 and C-4 zoning. Anything in any classes other than that would not be affected in any way.
I'll be interested in your feedback, Karen, as far as how all those auto-related, you know, potentially auto-related uses that have zoning other than C-3 and C-4 will be affected, and what process they'll have to go through to get in compliance with this ordinance.
Councilmember Hanserling, could I just ask you a question?
Yes, absolutely.
What you just said on how ones that aren't in C-3 and C-4, how will they be affected? Is that not the same as what you just asked a minute ago about the service station, say, on Denton Highway and Stanley Keller?
Mm-hmm.
If they're not C-3 or C-4, I mean, that's all we're talking about here is C-3 and C-4. So if they're not in C-3 or C-4, then it's, they're not going to be affected, right?
Well, it goes back to item one. We're talking about all auto-related, and really delineate the particulars of...
But if they're already, say, in a different zoning category, they're not affected because they're not already in C-3 or C-4?
Here, let me fix that, Gene.
Okay.
Right there where it says, "Place all automotive-related businesses other than wholesale and retail paint and body shops requiring paint booth currently zoned in the C-3 zoning district." In other words, you're not, you're not doing anything to C-1 and C-2 classes. You're just saying that you want to place automotive sales, whether wholesale or retail, and paint and body shops as legal conforming uses in the C-3 class. If they're currently legal in C-3, then what I'm saying is leave that like that. Pull automotive sales and pull paint and body works out of C-3 because they are now in C-3 as legal non-conforming. Okay? If you are legal conforming, right now, if you're legal conforming in C-3, then this would not affect you. This only would affect sales and paint and body shop.
How would, this is a question for Karen, how does landscaping and serpentine wire and bob wire fit into this? I know this is getting into details possibly, but we're talking about folks going to have to still perform the landscaping. If they go through this process, they're going to have to come in compliance with the teeth of the regulation, and that is landscaping, that is one acre minimum, that is all the things that are in there presently that we're not talking about changing here.
Yeah, unless the council decides to make changes to that.
Okay.
Which y'all can do.
I don't think we've skipped over that one acre thing before, haven't we?
We have talked about it, yes.
Yes.
You know, we're talking about, and I know Mr. Heffley had touched on it before, conditional use, and let me just ask you, and this came up in several workshop, and it's really a philosophical deal, and I hate to say let's compare ourselves to neighbors, but in a way we do because we have to compete for businesses that either come here or go to our neighbors, so we have to do some apples-to-apples comparison. What are other cities doing regarding the need of what we're talking about here, and this is used car lots and auto-related sales? What are other cities that border us in our northeast Tarrant County general direction with this type of use?
The research that, in the past, that we have performed on this has shown that the majority of the cities that border us are actually making it more restrictive, and that's just the research that we have done on it, is, for example, North Richland Hills, I believe, to put a car lot, and they don't differentiate between used car lot or a new car lot.
Sure.
To put a new car lot in, I believe you have to have either a 10-acre minimum or a 15-acre minimum before you can do that. City of Fort Worth, they're a bit more lenient in that they do require it to be in a special district, and that doesn't mean that they have to get a special use permit or a conditional use permit, but there is a specific district that this type of use, as well as other types of uses that they have quite a number of, go into. So I would say that the research we've done, that the majority of them are getting more strict about it.
More strict.
Let me interject. Are they legal allowed uses in any cities bordering Haltum City?
I believe that Wataga, I believe, is, and Richland Hills.
Fort Worth, they're not a legal allowed use in any zoning category?
No, it's a special district. It's a specific district.
But are they legal allowed within that specific district?
Yes, in that district, yes.
The major philosophical difference for me and my perspective, and I think what the average citizen would expect is the mechanism we had in place before for used car lots is we had a conditional use, and I don't want to go into zoning one-on-one, and I'm definitely not to give a lesson, personally give a lesson on zoning, but two uses allowed in any zoning district are permitted use and a conditional use. And a conditional use is a use that the city deems that they would like to get some public review on, allow citizens to come forward to make sure that the use of that particular property doesn't have any adverse effects on them. And it goes for surrounding businesses as well. It allows people to give input into the process, to say yea or nay. It gives the council an opportunity to review to make sure that the screening is proper, the light is directed away from the residences, that all those protections are in place with public review. And the only difference between a conditional use and a permitted use is staff approval or public hearing, city council, and P&amp;Z approval. So I, for one, am for basically open government. I understand exactly what Mr. Heffley said, that in some cases it can be a real impediment because of due process, the length, and sometimes the cost. For instance, on the drainage study that was mentioned, and I think I've talked to staff a number of times, staff probably would have waived that if city engineer had known you were going to do that. He would have waived the drainage study in that particular case right off the bat because it's obvious. And in very, very few situations do they require... And in very, very few situations do they require any sort of extensive drainage study. It's typically just a few points, if anything at all, and it's only if neighboring areas haven't been platted and we know which way the water's flowing. I guess, in a nutshell, I'm for allowing the citizens to review what's going on in their neighboring properties, and I think by taking that mechanism away, it provides, or we lose the major mechanism by which we promote good, positive development with that process. With the CUP, if a property sends vacant for six months and it's just a delinquent property, if a new use comes in there, they have to come in and meet the regulations that are on the book, and those are minimum standards. It's landscaping, it's potentially drainage study, et cetera. We've had a number of those properties and businesses come through, three or four, we've never denied them, and those are some of our nicest-looking car lots. And I think it's, zoning is a long-term thing. It happens little by little, and if we take that major mechanism away, which is exactly what I think we're doing here, is we're taking this zoning ordinance back to, I guess, our original zoning ordinance back in 1958, where everything was legal and had its own zone, and there was no other, you know, public review. So the other thing I'd like to suggest, and I know I've rambled here, is I think, I would like to throw out the idea of the fact that maybe a workshop on this particular suggestion that's being put before us to allow more citizens some input on this, and particularly the P&amp;Z folks, and I don't think we can have enough input, because this is pretty much a drastic change from what we talked about through the workshops. So that's my two cents.
I just, I might be wrong about this. God knows I've been wrong before, and zoning is not my strong suit, but everything that Councilmember Henslering said about conditional use permits, I agree with, and I thought they were the end-all. I mean, I thought it was great that you got to look at everything on the basis of that particular business and where it's going to be and what it's going to do and like that. What is, what my understanding is now from business owners is that if you have a conditional use permit, you cannot go to the bank and borrow money to do anything to your business. And I don't know if that's right, but that's what I've had several people tell me. Does anybody know that?
I do.
If you have conditional use, you can or can't?
I've called all three of the major banks in town. They had no idea who I was.
Uh-huh.
I called, acting like I wanted to get a business loan on a car lot, and I asked them what questions and information would I have to provide to them to get a loan. And I played dumb, and I said, "How about zoning? Does that have anything to do with it?" And they said, "That is not, absolutely not one of the criteria." You can call J. McSpadden, the other two banks. It has nothing to do with the zoning of the particular-
Did you mention conditional use permit?
I certainly did.
Good.
And what they said, they base it on the value of the business that's there and the property that's there and the neighboring businesses as appraised by the TAD.
I told you this wasn't my strong suit. That's just what I heard.
Well, we heard that in several workshops, and in essence, to get to the very bottom of what's right and what's wrong, and, you know, this been or that's been, I just called those banks and asked them. And we're talking about Holton City and Holton City Banks, and hopefully we're doing business at those banks.
Mm-hmm.
And that was the response I got. And so in my mind, that is not an issue, so.
Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you very much. I drive up and down Bell Nap, 28th Street every day, just like everybody else does. I, for one, am sick of seeing grown-up, unused property up and down the main corridor of our city. I do not feel that our present zoning ordinance is user-friendly in any way. I feel like we're running more business out of Holton City than wants to be here. I can't believe that someone would come in and attempt to get something done here when it's going to take them a period of 90 days, when they can go right across the street to Fort Worth, lay down their money, and get a CO the same day. As I said, I'm not a zoning specialist. I do know that we have, in effect, wasted one year of our time.
Right.
We have gone to numerous, numerous workshops. We have listened to everybody's input, and to this point, two proposals have come before this council, and I made both of those proposals. You know, if everybody wants to let this thing die, then, you know, that's what's going to happen. I'm not willing to accept that. I'm not willing to shortchange the business owners of Holton City, and I'm not willing to shortchange the citizens of Holton City by running all these places off and increasing their ad valorem tax rate to cover it. That's not an acceptable idea to me. Are there problems with this? You bet you there are. Can they be fixed? Yes, they can, but you're going to have to direct staff to do something, right, wrong, or indifferent. If we sit here with our eyes covered, nothing's going to happen. If we sit here with our hands over our ears and refuse to hear it because we don't like it, nothing's going to happen. We're going to look up, and we're going to be right where we were one year from today if we don't do something about this. For lack of a better idea, I'm certainly ready to make a motion to instruct staff to go forward in some way or another with this proposal and the proposal that was made the other day, to take the ideas on those two proposals and determine what a good course of action is. I'm tired of waiting around for something to happen. It's not getting done, so.
Well, I will say this. In the almost year that we've been working on this, I don't see any member of council coming forward with any ideas, and I would think you probably spent a lot of time on this, and so, and I thank you for that because it's more than, it's further than we've gotten before. And yes, there's some things wrong with it, and yes, we need to talk about them, but a year is plenty enough to work on a zoning issue, and I think that, I agree with what you're saying. It's time to, I think, give this to staff and ask them to come up with something that we can look at and start getting agreeing or agree to disagree, but to make some kind of headway. Councilmember Hurley.
If Mr. Jennings wants to make a motion, then I'll second it. Turn this over to staff, let them find tenant, let legal review it, and come back to us with an ordinance that we can vote on.
I believe, was-
I would be more than happy to make a motion. I would like to rephrase it a little bit. I would like to make a motion that we turn the document in front of us tonight over to city staff with the understanding that there are no planned changes in the C1 or C2 classifications. Evidently, that hasn't been made quite clear. What I was attempting to do here was address C3 and C4 problems. Before this point, we didn't have a C1 or C2 problem that I knew of. Evidently, we created one, so I would like to proceed with that in mind. I would also like to get input from legal as to the feasibility of requiring people to rezone their property to C4, those that would be affected by this. I can't see how anybody would have any problem with increasing the regulations for businesses, but I would like staff to review each and every item and give us their input as to what they think. What I would like back in a period of four weeks, I don't think that's too long to ask, is a proposal from staff as to how we need to proceed on the C3, C4, legal conforming, legal non-conforming portion of our zoning ordinance. I would like you to take into consideration any current zoning that we have as far as motorcycle sales, boat sales. If those need to be tied into one of these categories, we need to know that. You know, pretty much, I'd like for us to be on the same page. I'd like city staff and the council to work to alleviate this problem, and heaven knows it is a problem. So I would leave it in their hands as to how they want to go about compiling this information and the form they want to give it back, but I would ask that it be back to us in a period of four weeks from today with our recommendations.
And is that a second still, Councilmember Hurley?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Please register your vote. Okay, motion passes with Councilmember Henslering voting no, and Councilmember Williams abstaining. I would like to ask council to, when we receive this from staff, to come to that particular council meeting prepared with your homework done. If you have a question that you need answered, if you will call, pardon me, if you call Bill and get that answered prior to council meeting so that we can be ready to go with this at that time. Pardon me. Agenda item number 18 concerns no-through trucks. Councilmember Williams put this on the agenda, and I'll defer to him.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've received a couple of complaints from Carson Street residents and business owners considering signs down that area that say no trucks. This is a simple sign with a picture of a bobtail truck with a circle around it and a red cross through the center of it. And there's been a little bit of a controversy as to what no trucks means. On our ordinance, it shows Carson Street is, it's not a truck route. And for the benefit of those that, if they're not familiar with it, what a truck route means is a truck can go through from one point to the other using that as the route to get there. No-through trucks means that a truck cannot start at one end of that street and go to the other just to be going through there. Now, if they've got business on that street, take, for instance, our Burglary Independent School District uses this Carson Street to service South Burglary. So there's a reason for those trucks to be on that street. Say if there's an 18-wheeler that unloads over at one of the shopping centers over in Richland Hills or North Richland Hills and wants to take that route back to get the Airport Freeway, that's not a way there should go. They should stay on the truck route. I believe the proper way would go would be stay on Bell Nap till they get to Beet Street and go to the freeway. And so what we'd like to do is have some sort of a clarification on these no-truck signs to where the police department will know what they're enforcing, give them a direction from the council, what we won't. We're actually, what we're doing, we're putting out a fire before it starts. We're going to redo Carson Street, and it's going to be five lanes, and it's going to be concrete. And we get this road rebuilt, it's going to be a welcome sign for people just to use it for a cut-through. And we're not, we're not really building Carson Street to be a cut-through. We're using it for our own service for the residents and the businesses down there and the schools going back and forth. And so I guess it's pretty well open to council discussion to see what we want to do on this and see what their feelings are.
Mr. Eisen has some clarification, so I'm going to go to him next.
It was my understanding, based on the conversation in pre-council, and certainly I'll stand to be corrected if I'm mistaken, but it was my understanding that the council's desire was for us to adjust those signs so that they say no-through trucks and have the police department enforce accordingly, and we'll certainly are glad to do that if indeed that's the council's intent. There was a little discussion about what constitutes a truck, and I think in pre-council, we had indicated that the way the ordinance is currently written, anything with a gross vehicle weighed over 40,000 pounds, is, fits that classification. And I didn't understand that the council had any intent in changing that, but again, if I've misunderstood, then I'm certainly subject to correction. But my understanding at least is that you wanted us to adjust those signs so that they clearly say no-through trucks and have the police enforce accordingly.
Right. What we're wanting to do, we're wanting to cover the trucks that are weighing 80,000 pounds and pulling 40-to-50-foot trailers behind them going through there using it for a cut-through. Now, we understand that we're going to have service trucks that are going to weigh 30 to 40,000 pounds that service our different businesses down there, and those, we want, we welcome those to come in. And I think probably the ones we have in the residence, they pretty well self, we don't want trucks in there, period. And, you know, we do allow the city services trucks to go through, and also the trash collection trucks get to go through there. So that's pretty well self-explanatory, but the explanation needs to be on the, like Lynnview Drive, Browning, Carson, Holton Road, streets of that nature there, major carriers.
Councilmember Markham.
Thank you, Mayor. I've had some complaints like Councilmember Williams has had, and also, we need to keep in mind that the most of my complaints on this particular issue came from school crossing and school people because there is a school zone in that area. Burglary Elementary is very close, like we've said. So I think it, I think it's diligent upon the city to go forward with the no-three trucks and enforce it. That's all I have, Mayor.
Do you want to make that into form of a motion?
Well, I don't want to steal Mr. Williams' thunder, but yes, I would.
I don't have any lights on.
Yes, I put that into form of a motion.
All right. Councilmember Williams?
I'll second my motion he made.
I have a motion in a second. Is that clarified for you, Mr. Eisen?
Yes, I do.
All right, please register your vote. Motion, okay, wait a minute. Motion passes unanimously.
He's wavering on it.
The next agenda item is boards and commissions, and I know there's some appointments tonight. Gentlemen, Councilmember Jennings?
I'd like to be first. I would like to bring the name of Cody Elliott of 5465 McNeil and Harlan Streeter of 3720 Leighton Avenue to the committee to look into the crime tax vote. And I would also like to bring forward the name of Mr. TC Powell of 4912 Sable for the Ethics Committee.
All right. Do you want to just wait and ratify these all at one time?
Works for me.
Works for you? All right. Councilmember Everett?
I have three reappointments and one appointment. The first reappointment is Cecil Paul Cluta to the Beautification Board. The second reappointment is Patsy Sullivan to the Library Board. The third reappointment is Pat Davenport to the Volunteer Service Board. And the fourth appointment is Bill Landford to the Ethics Committee. I know he lives on Holton Road, but I don't have his address. We should have that.
I think it's probably already on record.
Okay.
Councilmember Patino?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have one appointment to the Ethics Committee, would be Cheryl White, 5766 Fall Creek Drive, 76137. I have a reappointment for the Beautification Board, Ms. Shirley Whitley. A reappointment for the Crime Prevention Board, Beverly Hanson. A reappointment for the service, for the Fire Service, Georgine Jackson. The SOB Board, Johnny Crabtree. A reappointment to the Library Board, Mrs. Lisha-
Henderson.
Henderson. The Zoning Board of Adjustment, Mr. David Hunt.
You've been a busy little beaver, haven't you? Councilmember Markham?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have three appointments at this time. Appointment to the Library Board, Mrs. Joyce Moody, 5816 Webster. Appointment to Ethics Committee, Mrs. Ruby Smith, 2100 Holton Road. An appointment to Crime District Study Committee, Mr. Buddy Stewart of 3710 Holton Road. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Hurley?
I've got several, Mayor.
That's fine, go right ahead.
Crime Prevention Board, a reappointment of Harlan Stewart, Streeter, I'm sorry, 3720 Leighton Avenue. Ethics Committee, Martha Hancock, 5425 Stephanie Drive. Fire Services Board, Donald Hartz, H-A-R-T-Z, 5245 Palmer. Library Board, Bonnie Richards, 4928 Sable. Park Board, a reappointment of Britt Ford, 3420 Meadow Oaks. Volunteer Services Program Board, Gwynne White, 4707 Lorain. Crime Control District Tax Committee, Tommy Sanderson, 4609 Roxy, and Vicki Burton, 5709 Denise. And Zoning Board of Adjustment, Number One Alternant, Val Whitfield, 3100 Meadow Oaks. And Zoning Board of Adjustment, Number One Alternate Val Whitfield, 3100 Meadow Oaks.
Thank you. Councilmember Hanselring?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have one appointment, that's for the Crime Control District Study Committee, that's Mrs. Debbie Giltmeyer, and I'll have to get the address for Helen tomorrow.
Councilmember Williams? Excuse me, one minute, you don't have ethics yet?
No.
Okay, Councilmember Williams?
I'll make this as brief as possible, but I've got a long list of them. Beautification Board, I'm reappointing my Volunteer of the Year, Diane McGee, 5621 Diamond Oaks North. And I'll have the phone numbers on these for the city secretary, and I'll pass it down when I get through. Crime Prevention Board will be Sherri Dunn, 2016 Owens. The Fire Service Board, I'll be reappointing James Lowey, 5300 Vicki. On the Library Board, I'm reappointing Loretta DeBois, 4001 Georgianne. Planning and Zoning, Kathy Thompson, 5717 Cedar Crest. Park Board, reappointing Kim Kirby, 4516 Sabel. Volunteer Service Board, Sharon Bryan, 3509 Rita Lane. Zoning Board of Adjustment, I'm reappointing Harold Black, 5717 Bertha Lane. On the Ethics Board, I'm appointing Jack Lucko, 3517 Montreal Circle. On the Crime Control District Tax, I'm appointing Eric Oglesby, 5240... Blue Spruce Circle? Blue Circle, I'm sorry. 5240 Blue Circle, I thought that I had that wrong. And also appointing Tracy Henderson, and we have his address on file. And I'll pass these to the secretary.
Would all of you please get the city secretary the names, addresses, and telephone numbers? Is council finished? Don't push your buttons, I have some.
We were just making sure they weren't.
I am reappointing Bob Yates to the Civil Service Commission, and Bobby Arthur to the NICS Advisory Committee. For the Housing Authority, three commissioners, Earl Hall, Bertha Roden, and Pauline Wright. And for the Ethics Committee, Reverend Robert Neely of 6104 Circle View. For the Crime Control District, Clovis Wetzel of 4700 Estes Park. And Jennifer Fix, 4533 Creekside Drive. And let's see, I believe, I believe that's it for those. And then, to ratify, for Council liaison for Crime Control District, Council members Jennings, Hanselring, and Markham. And for Economic Development, Council members Everett, Patino, and Williams. That's it for me, so if you would please ratify the recent nominations, appointments, I should say. Pass this unanimously. Thank you, council. We'll now move, we don't have any excuses, I mean, any absences tonight. We don't have any excuses either. We don't have any excuses to be absent. Excuse me? Oh, okay, that's, never mind, okay, never mind. So we'll now recess into executive session pursuant to Section 551.071, 551.073, and 551.074 for consultation with city attorney pertaining to any matter in which the duty of the city attorney, under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct, may conflict with the Open Meetings Act. We recess at 10:20.
We need to keep reading on the 073, 074...
I said those.
Did you have to grade the four?
Oh, 073, deliberation regarding real property, and 074, personnel, the whole thing?
Yes.
City manager review and city secretary review. All right, we now recess at 10:20.